This conference will now be recorded.
Now we're good.
I'd like to open the February 7, 2022, regular council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the class. And to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Okay, anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda as written? Move, Mr. Mayor. Motion's been made, is there a second?
All second.
Counselor Ash, would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor what?
Aye.
Mayor Hoiberg?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving right into presentations, we have. Your name? Stacy Pelisser from the Inter-Culture Society.
Do you want to speak freely, Ms. Allen?
I think so.
We've never chased anybody out, but technically it is a state mandate right now.
Okay, you guys start it up then.
Well, I think.
You do you, Stacy.
I do, just a little bit easier to keep it up and I'll come back.
Okay.
Okay, my name's Stacy Pelisser, and I'm here representing the Inter-Culture Society, which has the subcommittee of the grandstands. And thank you for having me here, every one of you. Not only do I want to bring an update, because it's been a long time since we've been before the council and not helping with the grandstands, and I'm also bringing up a proposal, I'd like to discuss with forming an alliance with the city to, and I'm willing to state it outright, ask for funding to complete the project in two part phase this year and next year, asking for $50,000 for this year and then $50,000 for next year, to not only do the renovations that we started, but also to bring it even better. And so that's the main purpose, is the part that I want to go back to the beginning on three, over three years ago. The city council over three years ago was ready to demolish and tear it down to the ground. And a group of citizens came forward that were very passionate about saving the grandstand and talking to the city council about staying to that order and instead reversing it and allowing the citizens a chance and an opportunity under the umbrella of a 501(c)(3) to actually renovate and rehab it so it can be occupied again and used by not only the city, but the community for events. And so it happened, everyone was really awesome at the city council. They allowed it to be converted under a lease for the purpose of the renovation. And so now that is under the grandstands committee, which is a part of the Inter-Culture Society. That very first year was spectacular, we had in-kind donations coming in. We received people who were willing to help stabilize it, because it was the whole point of this, because it was a broken beam. And that was the main reason for tearing it down, a broken beam. So when the committee came together, they got people to start donations. We did a capital campaign and raised donations towards the cause. We got materials from board, and if you notice the scaffolding, that was one of the initial things, was stabilizing it and then also closing it off and protecting it so that it's safe from vandalism and stuff that might creep in and hide under the decks. So with that said, about here into the project, COVID hit. And we were basically stalled on the project, and we had two contractors in line, both of them backed out. And so it sat there. The next year, we came in here, I think that was the last time we recorded to the council, is we came in here, they reported that we haven't done anything except for try to find another contractor. We found blue lamp beams that were donated to the cause, three beautiful, large beams. And Mayor Hoiberg and his wife were amazing in cleaning them up, getting them prepped and everything. I'm JR, you guys, he also stepped in, I didn't know that part. It was, it was a great work of effort to even find them and locate them, and I do know part of that. And then not only on top of that, the posts that are supposed to hold the beams in place, monies were expended to put together an engineering plant, so we have an engineering plan to put this together. Costs were expended to get these materials brought and stored in the site. And at that point, along with the scaffolding, the project paused again. And here we are today, back recording to you, because our fourth contractor has fallen out. Why did? Because of COVID. His family was deeply impacted when he got COVID and was out for a long time in his business. And then his family got it, and so he actually canceled at least eight projects with his team to go take care of and attend to his family. And so here we are, fourth contractor out. And it's kind of devastating and very wearying to go through such a long process, only to have one after another, after another contractor say, I'm sorry, I can't help you, we said we could. And in the meantime, we have a situation that the grandstands is sitting there, and it deteriorated. What started as one beam that needed to be fixed, because of the time that elapsed, because of vandalism, because of issues, because of those vandals coming in and running water pouring through the roof that got fixed at least eight to 10 times by Mr. Mayor up here. It started deteriorating some of the components of it, and it was noticeable to the engineers that it's likely we need to replace all three beams. So what initially started as a one-year project to rehab what was there, what initially started as a public campaign to fix the one broken beam, has now morphed into three beams. And that's the structural component that now needs to be fixed in order for us to inhabit, to inhabit the structure again. So with that said, I'm here because every one of us on the committee have kind of hit, you know, you get to a end point where you no longer have the energy, the willpower, you're tired. And we hit that, and when that happens, you need new steam to get under your feet, to get going forward. So we met in a meeting, and Mr. Calhoun here was fantastic and said, let's, let's take it to the council. And he's right, we need to take it back where it started and approach you as a council once more. Not this time to say, here, there's it is, and you're left, but what I wanted to approach you about is saying, can we collaborate as an ally unit here, instead of just saying, you guys gave it to me, and now we're going to back to you and say, do it as you will, demolish it. And that was our original plan. I want to actually propose that we invest it to our community. A lot of community members have taken great time, a lot of effort, to work towards a resolution and fix this. And at this point, you know, unless we put a little bit of, under their feet, we're going to run out of that steam, and you guys are just going to go, no, we're going to vote against it, it costs too much, we're going to demolish it, it's cheaper to demolish it. Well, I can guarantee you, it could cost 40,000 to 50,000 at this point, demolishing it, removing the electrical and relocating it, turning it into a parking lot, you can't, you very well can. It'd be your final decision, and we would be, go with whatever you say. But I'd rather say, take that 50,000, rehab it, and then instead, you know, invest up to 50 more to make it almost perma-proof, you know? And put the paint job on it that I'd love to see on it, get a new roof so that it can stabilize and stop having issues with vandals going in, if we put a better door up there with a stronger system around it. Because then we don't need the barriers we have, it'll have something better blocking it that can be part of that project. So at this point, they're here in support because they've been part of the group that has been in here. About probably 20,000 to 35,000, I think those exact numbers from the homework before, from our secretary thing, but about that much in monies and in-kind donation has been put forward already into the structure for the rehab, the stabilization of it, the scaffolding, the engineering project report, which we do have the plans to do it, material and the posts that we have and the blue lamp beams, which are waiting to be in place. And at this point, we just need your help financially to get it finished. And then we can rally the community again, if we have the, the financial funds. And just before this, Mr. Calhoun was speaking with another contractor, who's actually, again, interested, so number five, Steve Bighouse, saying he's very interested in the project and doing it with the city and with the Inter-Culture Society. So it's not an end of the road, but I'm bringing the road back, full circle. And I would ask that you all have discussion, open questions, and see if this is something that you'd be willing to invest back into the community, not only for the equity of the building, because it is something that is valuable, material, building costs have gone up through the roof. So that building that is still appetizing over there is worth significantly more than when we started this project. And on top of that, it's a valuable piece of history for the community. And enough people stood up and said that we want to try and make this happen, that I just need to give it back to you guys too, to assist us, if you would. And I'm going to kind of leave my presentation at that for the moment. I know I just talked a lot, if you have questions or anything for me.
Anybody have comments to add?
Just full disclosure, I am part of the grandstand group, the president of the group. I think you missed that the glue lamps that were donated from the school and Lake Oswego, they're very large, they're 42 inches deep or something, six inches wide. More than enough, all three of them, they have been dipped and, and treated for, pressure treated. It was a good expense that community members stepped up and paid for. I think we have all new posts, the three across the front. Horizontal brace from the front to the back, so there's like, I think, five posts ready to go to. So it's new posts, new, new beams, and then there's some cross bracing that's steel and engineering, steel rod, basically. And some concrete footings and stuff, so.
And to add to that, I did forget to mention, there are still about $90,000 donations sitting and waiting to go towards the project financially as well that were donated by citizens.
How much?
Nine, about nine thousand.
Over 10.
It's a, I think it's a little less than nine, I don't remember, there had been a couple minor expenses that had come out. There is a $45,000 a month, or not that much, I may be wrong about there, is a small bank charge every month. And so as we sit, as we wait, the donation is depleted, and I don't want that to keep happening. I don't want them to go to good cause and actually work towards that, you know?
And the beam brackets were engineered at a, at a, such a heavy-duty half-inch type steel and huge for those big beams to bolt on and everything, I think it's, you're looking at 8,000 to 10,000 for all the steel package to have them fabricated. So the group didn't want to spend people's donated money if the project wasn't going to be able to move forward past the having the materials and the brackets made, but not enough money for the contractor to install, so. Kind of at that holding point.
Yeah.
This is my first time being presented about the grandstands, so in terms of purpose, what is the vision for events or activities that would be held there that can't be served by another venue in town?
I appreciate you asking, there's, when we first presented it, we had this grandest business plan. And I bring that up because it was very nicely laid out, it was all work on the back. Let's just, we had the ideas that we could actually bring in events, events, because it is a 400-seat stadium, and there is nowhere else in town with a covered venue that can seat that many people. We have bleachers that we pull out here at Hawkins Park, that can hold, what, 200 maybe, max. And, but they're not covered, and they're always boiling in the sun. There's always the option that minor events for the annual affairs that we have here could be held there. Sporting events, we do have sports games, soccer and whatnot, that are played in that field right now, and they sit chips, bing, 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 right in front of me. And they can be using the bleachers and attract more people to actually sit there. We had thought to the start of this one, we were asked by Ms. Mitchell to come together with a good proposal of how it would be used, had gone and talked with Oregon Races, and they were very interested. We had talked to, there was a bike, because of the Vernonian Trail here, there was a bike group that was actually posing some interest in. Obviously, a lot of this stuff has been on hold at the moment, they're revitalizing it right now and starting to bring those things back. So when we're thinking small community events, yes, we've got them already. Fourth of July, Great Men who Mash, it's been held there, can we hold it in front of it? I'd like to hold it using it. And we did have the loggers events, which obviously are in the other field, but other portions of that event can happen there instead, which they have shown interest in doing that. I know that off the top of my head, I can't think of it right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been probably on the front lines along with JR more than anyone else from the beginning. And I've, you know, I've been, it's been a roller coaster ride for me personally. And putting all that aside, my final decision on this would be what's best for the community. And I've watched it deteriorate over the last three years, been vandalized, people living in it, people trying to catch it on fire, people spray painting, people breaking locks, which I've replaced. You know, it, it's been a long road. And Mike, I'm going to get right down to what's, I'm going to put all my, all that aside. And so I'm at what's best for Vernonia. So I'm thinking, I'm going to speak for the council a little bit here. I'd like to, before the Inter-Culture Society comes and asks for money, I think they ought to at least have a, a plan, a contractor, to tell you how much it's going to cost to fix it right now. And then I would listen to that, I, I did hear one positive that you had somebody very interested in it. So I've had three people very interested in it. But I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Vernonia, even though quite a few of them want to see it repaired, that we spend that money, or allocate that money for just that purpose, and we don't even know how much it would cost to fix. It's pretty, it's in disrepair, and if you haven't gone and looked at it lately, I suggest you go look at it. The whole roof needs to be replaced. That's basically where I'm at, I'm, I feel like I'm caught in a rock between a rock and a hard place. But basically, bottom line, I want the best for Vernonia. You know, there's a lot of history there, and the Lions Club allocated $4,000 for it, which is still in the, in the bank, and that was over two years ago. And we could be, if we're not going to save it, we could be helping other people, that's just an example. So that's about all I have to say on it. I'm just being honest with the, with the, with you and council, and so.
I'd like to speak to your concerns, if that's okay.
Sure.
So I know you, of all people, have been kind of the protector over it, and it is wearying to see what you're protecting continues over and over, to have that issue of vandalism and stuff. And it definitely doesn't help when it's just sitting there looking like it is with the temporary wrap around it that doesn't keep people out like it should. And there's nothing you can do about it. And with regards to the roof, we knew eventually it would need, what, roofs last 20 years, a good roof, and then you start looking at it and say, what needs fixing, right? And this roof is well past its prime, and we all know that. And so to, to go into the project and say, if we're going to do this and make it happen, absolutely yes, we would need to identify the contractor and say, get a permit on what now versus three years ago when we started it, it will now cost us, and, but I don't just want to take it and replace the one beam which we started the project with. I do want to consider, what is a roof going to cost, what is the paint job? And then we still have volunteers willing and able to make the time to assist with those projects to cut down on costs too. For example, the painting, the repainting, the floor painting, the bleachers, it all needs it to protect the wood again. So you're, you are true, you are right in that if it were something that the council is willing to entertain the idea at this point, to go forward and work in alliance, then we would continue to entertain really strongly getting a bid from a new contractor. And so I just wanted to bring that to your feet.
You're aware usually, well, I guess this is a presentation, but yeah, I mean, we're going to have to go through a process to even entertain this.
Yeah.
Probably a workshop, a lot of input from staff, I mean, where would we even pull the funds? You know, whether ARPA would qualify or not. So, you know, it's a complicated issue for us to even entertain. And then, and then weigh what we're taking away from somewhere else for this, so.
Absolutely.
I guess that'll be up to council, whether they want to schedule a workshop or whatever to mull it over, make a decision.
As far as I know, Dale, this ARPA money can go into a 501(c)(3) as a donation, as council sees fit.
I don't know, I'd have to rely on staff's input on that.
I'm just saying, I think it's available, I mean, it's for the community, the money, and so far, we haven't really done much for the community, except for pay someone to put the pipe in the ground that we already own. So, and a few other things, but I mean, as far as what the community can see, physically see, what are you going to do with $500,000 that's given to Vernonia, we haven't studied, here it is, you know? So this could be an opportunity to say, this is what we're doing for the, for the community. We haven't seemed to be able to do anything for the businesses yet, because we couldn't seem to work out the logistics of that. So this is an opportunity for the whole community, not that the pipe and sewer isn't, but other people might argue, we have a staff that could do that, why are we paying contractors to install it? So I understand, you understand, but the community might not.
Like I said, if I, you know, we can't do it here tonight, we'll have to, whether we want to have a workshop and get the staff's input, or we're funding, whether that would be legitimate or not.
I think it's a good idea, like Mayor said, to get some hard numbers.
Well, yes, we definitely know, got to know what we're looking at.
I don't think we, maybe. I don't think we even have hard numbers of what to do with it.
Would the council be willing to allow the ICS to, an extension, maybe for one month, to try to find a contractor?
They don't have, they don't have any deadline, Mayor.
Okay.
So they're, it's one year, it's one year from the completion date to hold an event. That's their only deadline in the contract currently.
I think the basic thing we need to know as a council is, what, what's the plan if we tear it down? And what the cost is of that, where that money's coming from, versus how much is it to invest to save the structure? And weigh the two benefit, or, you know, the two things. So obviously, tearing it down is probably going to be cheaper, but we don't really, I don't know what we're going to do with power that comes up in one room and then goes over to another wall, how's that going to look in the middle of a park? So that kind of stuff needs to.
It'll be worked out.
Needs to be addressed.
I, I personally think we could work together and to come up with some numbers and in the near future, and maybe plan a workshop, see both sides of it.
But you wouldn't want to put council in a position where we say, okay, and then we get, oh, well now it's twice as much as we were. Because now we're ran into it, now we need another 50, you know, so.
Well, all I ask at this point then is if you will entertain the option, we can then go ahead and spend some energies and get some pricing together now. If you're not interested in entertaining the option, that's where I waste the energy, because it does take time and effort to get a contractor out who's willing, interested, and then multiple parts, so there's going to be multiple people. And, but I am, I am willing and able, and Mr. Calhoun has stepped forward with already reaching out to identify another interested contractor, which is quite a passion, and I was really pleasantly surprised to walk in tonight with that, for you, because I didn't have it really prepared, so, yes.
So could I propose something, that you guys hold a workshop, we can look into the, what JR is saying and whether or not that works from the ARPA funding? Because really, aside from that money, you don't really have $100,000 in any one fund that you could put towards this. So we need to kind of delve into that, make sure it's something that you could use that way before you guys are, before they, they start going and looking for stuff. So that's what I would say, is let's investigate that a little bit, get some clarification, even talk to connections.
Tap into that.
Right, then, then that might tweak where you're looking, or if you're looking for other funds. So we could, we could bring you kind of a staff report to your next meeting with that information, and then if you care to at that time, you could schedule a work session to meet with them and kind of talk about it. If that works, that gives us like a couple weeks to investigate how free that money is for the 501(c)(3) option that Counselor Allen is discussing.
Yeah, I'm just going by memory when I read the eight Bolton points that you provided, but I could be wrong.
Does that work, okay.
That sounds like a path forward for it, I mean, it's still, you know, maybe use community input, you know, because I know there's people go, if you're going to spend money, spend it on the new one, you know, up at the new high school, so. You know, there's that, so.
I could propose that right now, we can see if that would pass.
And it wouldn't matter if it doesn't qualify.
The new money, do you mean the pudding?
If it doesn't qualify, then you wouldn't be able to get to the school either.
Yeah.
So that's what we need to flesh out.
Dale, if we can't do it at the old grandstand, we could do it at the new one.
But she said it doesn't qualify. I mean, pull him in there early, and again, there might be some people who want paved streets too, so, open up.
Well, thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
To Calhoun for being a part of this.
So our next meeting, we should be able to know if it's possible, and if we, council is under their general consensus that we should even bother with a workshop, so.
The next meeting will be, it's a weird, it's a Tuesday, right? It's the 22nd because of President's Day.
Oh, that's right.
Just being out. Don't come on Monday, it will be locked.
Okay, I do not have a mayor's report tonight, so moving into any, are there any council committee meeting reports tonight?
I have.
Okay.
So Public Works Committee, Matt, Ben was there, lost the street condition report to us. This probably should come to council too eventually, I suppose.
Yeah.
I think he, I think he changed a few things, so I know one of the things I would really kind of want to see was kind of that pie chart of the different conditions and, and what's changing and which direction we're going. But I think we made some changes on, we separated out gravel roads versus paved. I think he's doing something with the.
Chip steel.
Chip steel.
Oil mat.
Oil mat, so it's, he said he's trying to get it to make sense, but with making those changes after the fact, it's not quite apples to apples anymore, so it makes it kind of hard to see, you know, if we're making progress. That's really the important question for us as council, you know, especially when we're just talking about funding here, you know, what do we need to achieve our goal? And so I, I mean, I'm perceiving that we're making progress with the map that he gave us, poor marginal street, it looked like we're about three and a half years out if we continue getting that funding source from having them eliminated, so. You know, which would be good, but we know things are going to be falling off. You know, which would be good, but we know things are gonna be falling off also in that three and a half years, other streets are gonna start slipping to marginal. So anyhow, we talked about that, Josette was there, she brought the public works project list to us, kind of informed the committee of all the different projects, the public work crew is responsible for and working on. We had, we had a pretty good discussion that night, and we talked some about sidewalk process, that was before the meeting, we had one, so anyhow, everybody was a little up to speed to what was going on, so.
Great, thank you, Dave. I see a new snowplow sitting down there, huh?
What?
New snowplow blade.
Oh, yes, somebody said they seen a new snowplow blade, yeah.
Sold yet?
Don't have a truck.
I had a library board meeting to attend, but I, I missed it. Oh, shoot, I didn't get the email in time from.
Our committee was canceled.
Oh, it was canceled? Oh.
The calendar says, I hope so.
The cemetery's gone virtual, so I'll be calling in on that one Thursday, I guess, so.
Okay.
I missed one there, so, I see the notes on it.
Okay. Are there any topics on the floor, Stephanie?
I have one, do you still, did you do it, or no?
Yes, totally, sir.
I want, I'll just read it for you, if that's okay? There's a hallway. One from Stacy Pelster, Intercultural Society, to invite the city and council to support community events.
Yes, Stacy Pelster, five eight five six nine, what was your name? Just wanted, first off, thank you, it was awesome having the outlets installed on the poles for the lights for Christmas. It was, that, that's a long dream, it's been a long time coming, and so Josette for getting involved with the grants and that part, that really worked out, so it's not just a thank you for that, but also Rich Organ for organizing the grants, as well as then utilizing the grant for that purpose. It's, it's really made a big difference, and I think that's going to be a nice addition. The other thing that I think a lot of people forget about with the Intercultural Society is, most people don't even know what it is. So for those counselors who might not know what the Intercultural Society does, we are a nonprofit, a very committed people, bringing out, to throw the, the community event, a lot of the community events, for example, we do the Easter and that for the kids, we do the Fourth of July Grand American Bash, the gala that was started a couple of years prior to COVID, so we have one gala, Mardi Gras, and it's gonna be Mardi Gras again this year. There is going to be, we also do the Halloween Children's Parade, and I think there was one other parade, there's a run, Bear Creek, I believe that is one, sure, and then Christmas in Brunnonia, so it's a lot of events, and I, I'm something to bring to consider for future, because it's not necessarily something we've ever asked or done, but I would love to see the city have an active involvement somehow, some way with the group in presenting or putting on these events, because the more, the merrier, and we are limited, we lost Grant Williams and two other members who've got it down. So with his loss, it kind of does everything, and so we are just picking back up with our first meeting this Wednesday, and we ride up the city with new members, and I would love to see also some kind of relationship between the city, besides just saying, yeah, you can use the space. I would really love to have city council support, city events have the name of city on it as goodwill, kind of something, so that not only can our resources go farther, but maybe you guys have ideas as well on how we work with you to promote these events even, and make them stronger. Thank you.
Stacy, you gonna do the duck race again, issue?
Oh, yeah, I remember that. Remember that great man in honor of Grant? He was actually at the Santa festival, going to do a, what is it called with the border of the holes in it?
Cornhole.
Cornhole, we were gonna do, yes, we were gonna do a cornhole competition, and he was gonna lead it, because he loved the idea, but he passed away, and so that we could do it without his help there, so we're gonna make that happen as well this year in honor of him, and we'll ride along Grant Williams' cornhole competition. So I just figured we'll work with another one.
Maybe think of a different way to word it.
Well, it is a cornhole competition. What am I missing?
Cornhole is also slang for someone's rear end.
Well, what else can it call the game? That is it?
My neighbor.
But it's Grant Williams' cornhole.
Okay, well, we'll find it.
I'm just saying.
Do you even want her, Stephanie?
Yeah, there's a lot of, yeah.
I know my kids are watching.
We're team here.
Which is something else we can consider, and how you maybe could, you participate with us somehow, I love that.
It might, it might hinder you if the, the city puts their name on it, then they want more insurance, or more rules, or more of this, or more of that, I don't know.
Usually, they ask us when they have a dunk tank.
Oh.
I've been, I've been there a couple of times.
Yeah. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Moving on, to set an agenda for acceptance, Cemetery Committee meeting minutes for January 2022. Page one. And those are virtual meetings, JR?
Yeah, I think they started holding them online, you can get the number off the city calendar, I believe.
They switched to that several months ago, they sent it to me, and I put it on the city calendars, and just go in there and click it. So it's usually up there, probably is in advance.
And the next one is Thursday, I believe, so.
I drove up there last week, and the flight fall basis all in place and looking good. Looks pretty good up there. Well, any other discussion on the Cemetery Committee meeting? Anyone? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
So moved, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
To set an agenda for approval, City Council meeting minutes for January 18th, 2022. City Council meeting minutes for January 24th, 2022. If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept these two meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion, Matt.
Thank you. Moved, is there a second?
No second.
Thank you, Counselor. If you call a roll, please, Stephanie.
Huber?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried, carried.
Is there any unfinished business tonight?
Just the work session on the amended agenda that you guys got.
Okay.
About the set date for?
That's the date that I would like you guys to vote.
Oh, the first 15.
Yeah.
February 15th.
Yeah.
The Tuesday.
I don't have any problem with it.
That's a Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Sunday's the 14th.
I have two meetings, but I will try to move them.
So, can everyone make that meeting?
Yeah.
Six thirty.
I don't have anything, I could make that.
Okay.
Move it if Counselor Ash can't make it.
Um, I can try, I can talk to them. I can move my other meetings.
What stops us from moving in a couple of days, is it the other people?
Uh, I'll go grab the calendar that I have.
Yes.
I could do 16th, 17th, like, pretty much another night, probably, because I don't.
Well, you shouldn't have to counsel two meetings to make one.
Double book, because I didn't realize that the meeting I normally have on the 14th they moved for Valentine's Day, it's not a two day.
Right.
I appreciate that. Try to make it happen.
Because I don't think I have anything.
You gonna try to make it happen, Sherry?
If we, if another night doesn't work.
She's gone.
But I'm wide open other nights, so.
But we have professional staff that's gotta make that, too, right?
That's what's on calendar.
Oh, you, you have that?
Yeah, I can prepare.
All right, your honor.
All right, so Friday, the 18th, and we can also do Tuesday, 22nd, I didn't schedule it then, because I suspect you guys want one another work session.
Don't we have a meeting on the 22nd?
Yeah, we do, council.
For council meeting.
Yeah, and then the 24th, or the 28th.
The 18th works for me, but 24th, I'm liable to be out of state.
I could do 18th or 24th, it cannot be the 28th.
Doesn't matter.
My schedule's pretty full, though, I might be able to get it in the 18th. Is that Friday?
Friday, two Fridays, yeah.
Friday? Next Friday.
Yeah, not this Friday, I can follow.
Nope, but I don't, but that's okay, I don't have to be there.
You got it, you're there. How about the 24th? No? Can you type more, Julie? Okay? How about the 28th?
I might be in traveling mode still at the time that you want to do it.
How about the 28th?
That's worse than that.
What happened to the 18th?
It doesn't work for staff.
I don't like meeting on Friday.
Yeah, let's, let's stay with the 15th, I'll work it out, it's fine. I can do those things, though.
15th it is, Stephanie. Staff report, 2022, 2023 budget calendar.
Okay, pretty, pretty standard, every year, you guys adopt the budget calendar and appoint a budget officer, and then, like I did mention in here, this is the time for you guys to start thinking about any little ideas, suggestions, or pet projects that you.
Things from our committees.
Yeah, things from your committees that you want to see happen. Historically, we like to wait until after we adopt the budget to come up with some ideas. Staff is just as bad, so I'm really gonna try to, to get ahead of those things this year and make everybody really think about it before we get into the budget, because now that there's stricter rules as far as the reporting for the auditors and all that stuff, it just makes a lot of extra work for me when we, when we come up with things mid-year, and then I'm bringing you a supplemental, because we have all these other, you know, and so, anyway, that's, so I want you guys to start thinking about stuff, and then, before I really start, you know, I won't have the proposed budget ready until the end of April, so we've got a couple of months to, to get some ideas floating around, and you can just, you know, email is the best way to kind of, you know, if you have questions or think of things or whatever, and then I'm gonna make, have the department heads be doing the same thing, so.
Just pretty standard, Angie, as far as timeline.
Yeah, I just.
Compared to previous years.
Same every year, I change the date to match the.
Nothing's changed.
Day, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Refresh my memory, who's usually selected as budget officer, you or?
Does that.
The city administrator.
Yeah, it's usually the city administrator.
And meetings will be at scout cabin?
Yep.
Do we have internet, Frank?
Hmm?
Do we have internet scout cabin yet?
They're supposed to be getting ahead there, the police not been super speedy on that, but yeah.
Let's see, so, okay, we have a resolution to adopt this later, I believe, right?
You just approve it, you just approve it.
Do it now.
Does that as budget officer?
All right, I'll make a motion, then we adopt the proposed budget calendar for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and appoint the city administrator as a financial officer.
Is there a second?
Officer.
Counselor Ash seconded, you call the roll, please, Stephanie.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
This is from departments chief.
Nothing from me this time, you get my report on the next one.
Yes.
Still no applicants, though. Just the one.
Ordinances and resolutions, Resolution 2022-01, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Hey, I'm not going to read the staff report. I think we've all gone through it, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I did. I went through your summary here, the PD legal, is that something we're gonna talk about?
Yes, well, you're getting, you're going into executive session tonight to get a memo.
Okay, I asked, I wanted to make sure, I didn't talk about that, if that's what that was about, but.
And the abatement fund issue, I didn't quite follow that one, I know we've had that $10,000 floating in there and not been used for years.
Well, it's not been years, it's been.
Since I've been on council.
Three years.
It's been about three, yeah.
So, yeah, so what happened, it's always in, it's been in the budget, but I have, it always gets missed on my end of actually moving that $10,000 into that fund, so it's, it's been, that $10,000's been being held basically in the general fund this whole time, because I just skip over making that transfer, because we don't use that fund, it's just sitting there. So that was my oversight at the beginning, it keeps getting adopted every year in the budget, but then it's not, I never actually moved the funds from the general fund into that separate fund in the system.
Oh.
That's all.
There's a line item in there for the budget.
Yeah, it's in the budget, it's in the adopted budget, it's.
Budget line items coded, and there's a separate bank account for each one of those?
No, no, it's all in the same bank, it's just in the funds, so right now, it's in the general fund.
Oh.
And I've had to move it to the abatement fund. So when it comes, when the budget comes to you guys this year, when it shows that there's $10,000 in the abatement fund on my end, and the separate, completely separate accounting system that you don't look at, it's actually in there. So that's just a housekeeping item. We, the money's never gone anywhere, it's just been in the wrong fund.
In the system.
In my system.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And then you give the breakdown on this page, I noticed.
That's, that's the actual document that gets adopted.
So do you want to go through these, Angie, one at a time, explain them before we ask questions, or?
No, that's what this is, this is this.
Okay, well, you said it was a brief description, which I, I didn't quite understand all of it, but.
I'm just, I just, the brief is, these are the items that caused it to need to be brought home.
So 1620-00 admin phone.
Need to add $4,500 for admin phone, is that the whole phone system for City Hall? Is that what you're talking about?
And internet.
So why such a big increase?
It says in there, but the monthly cost that, when we upgraded to fiber, was more than what they originally quoted us. So the overall cost is higher than what I thought it was going to be when I wrote the budget.
And what was the upgrade, exactly?
We went to the fiber.
This, this.
Fiber versus DSL.
Right, who'd we go with, Blue Mountain or Zipley?
Zipley, we did it over, we did it last year, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Blue Mountain didn't have, wasn't an option at that point.
Maybe they'll give us some break. You're talking 1,200 a month for, for fiber, huh? You're talking twelve hundred a month for, for fiber, huh?
For the whole building, yeah, plus all the phones.
And professional service plus forty K. Is that a specific need?
Just spend a lot of it, that engineers are, it's mostly gonna go towards engineering costs for all of the permitting, all the projects we have going on, all the building we have going on. They, they're a lot more involved now than than they have been in years past, making sure that everything's.
Did we lower that last year, Joe said? Cause I remember you were thinking we weren't gonna build that many new houses this year. We were talking about that.
Well, no, so that's the, that's what you, how you calculate the SDCs.
But you also said the fees and expense to go along with it, so I thought.
Well, because, uh, when they, certain permits, when they file for the permit, the cost of that permit is covering the initial hours or whatever is expected. It's basically a deposit for engineering inspection. Um, so we didn't foresee that, we have more city works projects. They're not related to the engineering that's happening at houses, cause the permits typically pay for that cost. This is the city requesting extra inspections or testing or like engineering plans of the reader board base so that we build it stout enough so that the wind doesn't knock over the twenty-seven thousand dollar reader board. So it's little projects like that.
Uh, we, uh, did, I thought we were splitting that three ways, that reader board cost. Are we picking up the engineering now?
No, we'll still request the breakdown of the cost, but it's, we are outlining the cash in little projects like that. Some of them, which we don't have partners, right? They're solely ours, so. Even if the costs are reimbursable, we still, they don't get credited to that expense line item, so it's, I still have to, to make it. I still have to bump it up so that it covers what we're spending. Yeah. Even though we might be receiving money up here, that, that's not how it works. So I, I've tried to do it that way in the past and and they don't, the auditors say no. So the income has to stay the income and then the expense has to remain an expense, even if we're recouping that, it doesn't. Doesn't get off, yeah. So you, and that's where the engineering, like I said, and we've had some of these bigger projects, I think, like, um, up on Louisiana. Yeah. All that stuff that's going on up there. There's a lot of engineering for those construction projects that we are gonna be billing those builders for. But I, we still have to cover that expense on, in the budget, so it has to be bumped up to cover for that. Yeah. And then the auditors charged us an extra ten thousand dollars this year as well that I wasn't expecting, so.
Oh, that's a good racket, when you have to have it and they charge what they want.
Yeah.
My next question would be for Chief Connor, on your police line fifteen-hundred-zero-zero. Looks like you're wanting to take away thirty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars out of your budget.
I think that's just an adjustment, right?
No, it's just going to contract services to pay for the sheriff's department. So it is a salary, it is a salary, but it's not to an employee we have under us, so it has to go into contract services.
Thought we had it paid for by the position that wasn't being used. We talked about.
Yeah, that money's still in salary.
But it's still. The money's still in salaries.
So it's going out of one fund and, or one line item and going into another?
Yeah.
Oh, you're just moving it down to contract services. I see.
Right, right.
Didn't have that one highlighted, I apologize. So is that thirty-three thousand what's gonna take to cover what we've already used, or is that, is that?
That's the current agreement covered.
Okay, it's not projecting anything for next year?
No.
Okay.
It's all just this year.
And the cemetery was for pouring the base up there?
Um, where, tell me the, where are you looking at?
Sixteen forty-five cemetery?
Yeah.
Was thinking we were doing that ourselves, but contracted it out, huh?
Yeah, well, it's an engineered base to hold that flagpole up, so it's deep and then there was a shelf cut and then the base that you see is actually, you know, twelve inches down and then there was, there's way more in the ground.
Yeah, Ben was talking about building, bending rebar and doing all this stuff, he must have, uh, decided against it.
Well, we had, it's Swart is the one that did all the work. So I think Ben helped Swart get us a deal, what you would've charged someone for that work, but, yeah.
And the seven thousand on parks?
Trying to find where you're at. Well, next, backside.
Contract services, sixteen. I know we spent extra, but we already approved it for the bathrooms.
It was right here in the thing that was for tree removal. Um, and then the annual, well, the pay station is part of that.
Oh.
A maple crest and. Maple crest and then just assuming there's gonna be more things in the next five months that are gonna come out of that.
We could use some more work on the restrooms at the lake.
Yeah.
Possibly.
Yeah, I'm working with Mitch. We have some money in there, but we're gonna present you guys.
Yeah, for the next budget.
Yeah.
And we might look at the, or Hawkins Park bathroom, too. I don't know how much money we got.
Yeah, one option is that we're gonna do at least the flooring all the same, so that'll be one that comes to you guys.
And then I did circle the two hundred thousand plus for, uh, streets, contract services. Is that all our grant money accumulating?
ODOT grant, right above it.
Yeah, it's a hundred thousand a year. We're gonna wait till we get two years worth, or have we?
No, that's, we've got, we've got this project sitting over here that we haven't got the money for. And then we have the Spencer Alabama project that's, we're gonna do hopefully next month or the month after, and we'll get the money for that.
Oh, we'll get paid till the sidewalk thing gets.
Right.
So that's assuming we get that one and.
Yeah, the reimbursement grant, so you outlay the cash, do the work, they sign off on it, they give you the money. So we paid for, we paid for all that paving in the last budget cycle.
Has anybody come up and checked of sidewalk grades? I mean, I poured a lot of ADA stuff in my life and when I drive by, it looks so, looks half steep, I don't know.
Well, are you talking the one on river?
Just whatever one.
Uphill one?
No, the two that are poured already.
Now, the two that are poured already, I don't know if ODOT's inspected them, but they were done to the spec that. They approved. And then the river one, we're fighting with ODOT on that one right now. Yeah, there's not enough, it's too steep a grade.
I'm knocking on wood, they don't come out and say, no, that ain't gonna work, too, down to ones we already got done, so.
Well, they approved it and they're, they're within their specifications, so.
I think it's just the way they changed the grade to come down, it looks kinda like, whoa.
Wow.
For wheelchairs.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay, thanks for answering that. I guess that's all I had, so.
Thank you, JR.
Already take up all the time.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I came down and talked with Angie. Get on the, we had some, what they consider one-off expenses in sewer. Uh, I think the P O D incubator and I think the chlorinator calibration. Remember last year, we had some, I think it was in water, had some unexpected costs. Some of those we should've been charging into reserves, so otherwise we're gonna make our rates jump around, so. I think Angie said there was about five grand worth of, uh, costs there that were basically one-off events. So I would suggest that those come out of the reserve fund. Uh, she said, uh, chlorine costs have gone up fairly significantly, so those will be ongoing costs and those will have to be absorbed in rates.
What's our chlorine budget cost per year typically for, for now?
We don't have a budget for just chlorine, it's part of the sewer treatment, water treatment budget, um, that line item. So I don't, I don't have it broken down that.
How often do they fill the?
Thing. Um, I feel like he does it three or four times a year. Um, this last time, what did I tell you? It was nineteen hundred and then the one before that was.
Fourteen hundred?
Fourteen or something, or half, half goes to sewer, half goes to water. And then, and the, from that it was, I would say it was like twelve or thirteen last year, so I mean, it, it's jumped up a lot in the last few months.
Supply and demand caught us again.
Yeah. Shortage than the last.
Yeah.
COVID's made a lot of people a lot of money with all these.
Yeah, right? Yeah, the plant was offline, remember? Yeah, they had a chlorine explosion that took them out of production for like.
A long time.
A long time.
Oh, wow.
Like.
Where did that happen at, Joe? Longview, isn't it?
Yeah.
It was somewhere, I think, or California, the whole west coast was scrubbed.
Yeah, yeah, and we were glad Jeff was a hoarder at that point, cause we had enough to get like forty-five days or whatever.
Is there a way we can store more? Is it just?
No, you can't, well, you can't store, when you get more, then there's regulations because.
Or safety.
Yeah, the danger of it.
Hmm.
So.
Cause of the explosion?
Yeah, the explosion.
No one time we talked about going to the tablets, but I think those are just as hard to get.
Yeah.
Maybe even harder, so.
And then you gotta retro all your systems to.
Yeah.
Use the tablets, so.
That all you had, Counselor Webb?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't know, we need, you need.
Is there some?
Countful census on doing that.
Yeah, and then just when you'd make the motion, you would.
Make a motion.
Adopt it with the changes. So I'll just take five thousand out of sixteen-ten forty-two and move it into the sewer facility reserve fund. So it just changes the sewer treatment to one thousand plus, which I wouldn't bother with normally, but it's too much trouble to re-figure everything.
See where that was even at, I don't care.
Page twelve. Six.
Oh, yeah, the.
Ten forty-two.
The sixth gram, well.
Yeah, so take five thousand and. So it would leave it.
And then, man.
So is that on sixteen-ten forty-two?
Yeah, that's where I put those two, I think.
So that change will be in the, uh, motion accept this? Okay. Any other discussion or questions?
Like the general fund grew too, huh? And more money than we thought come in or something?
Yeah, the franchise fees were, I looked at last year and we, we brought in almost a hundred thousand dollars more in franchise fees.
Last budget cycle then.
What we budgeted for.
Wow.
But the end of the year, that just went to cash carry form.
Where's the bulk of that coming from? Garbage and, and last Oregon?
Um, you know, I didn't look at each one, I just looked at the total at the, the bottom of that category. But I'm sure that, yeah, a lot of it's probably electric, I don't, I wouldn't think garbage.
We got old cable or, or internet, right? We got two companies paying now, right? Internet was more than what.
Yeah, well, they're not. Zipley's always been paying, but Gorgnet will, once they have a producing corridor with customers, yes.
Oh, okay.
And then part of that category, too, is the property taxes, so.
What'd you call them, Gordon Meadow?
Gorgnet. Blue Mountain.
Oh, Blue Mountain.
Their parent company is Gorge Net.
Oh.
Like Columbia River Gorge.
Gorge Net?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, cause they're out of good rumors.
I've only heard it called Blue Mountain, so.
Yeah.
Gorge Net, huh?
I think you still need to make that motion, right? I'll make a motion that we, uh, blew five thousand dollars off of line item sixteen-ten dash forty-two to the sewer facility reserve fund.
Came out of, what, five?
Five thousand dollars.
Five thousand.
Yep.
And so adopt resolution.
I don't.
Oh, yeah. Resolution has titled, so we're heading, where, where's that, right here, A. Resolution number twenty.
Twelve.
Twenty-two dash oh-one. A resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-two.
So moved, Counselor Webb, very good. Is there a second?
I'll second with changes noted.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Bear Holbar?
Aye.
Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Buck?
Aye.
Counselor Terry.
Okay, we're getting pretty good at resolutions, so let's move on to the next one, twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two. Adopt new personal policies handbook.
So every year, uh, CIS, area for liability insurance, or insurance. And they, they got the revisions to the handbook and that's, that's the template we've always used. Um, so this year, I went through and there was just a few minor revisions that they made and I incorporated those into our handbook. And that's what you've got before you. So the page numbers I put on here correlated to the page numbers in the handbook, not realizing that when the packet was printed, that the page numbers would get written over, so happy hunting.
I'm trying to read the good. For me, so.
Yeah. So if you guys have any questions on this, on the changes, I can answer them. Um, it's really not, I mean, this is what our insurance company recommends, it's what our attorney has assumed. So everything's legit.
And in the future, if you guys notice something like that and you let me know before Friday, I can send you out one with the page numbers. They have them all weekend. Whatever this fix is.
Yeah, I just, I read through it.
Yeah.
Pretty standard, look real similar to what I used to see in contracts.
Yeah, they're, before they played, I think.
Through me was the Juneteenth holiday. Had to look that one up.
Well, the state.
February recognized, it looked like the state recognized it.
State's gonna recognize it, I mean, this year, right? Certainly, yeah.
There's about fourteen or so, and.
Yeah, it's fourteen.
Fourteen, that's what I kind of came up with.
You soon will have to take one away to add one.
Oh, actually.
When you hit three hundred and sixty-five, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, yeah. I actually read through it pretty good. I actually like the, you know, we talked about in the past about a drug and alcohol testing program, but it's, it's almost in place, I mean.
Always had that language in.
You're, you're able to do, um, random tests or, or test somebody if, if you. Yeah.
That's always been, we've always had that language.
I think it's a pretty good program. Protect us, so.
No pause in place, though, for pre-employment or anything, yeah? What was the big, what was the biggest change that you recall?
In this?
Yeah, cause I didn't read through every line of it, that's for sure.
Just the ones I named, I mean, they're not really, there's nothing huge. Um, the, I guess the biggest one would be the bereavement leave.
Oh.
I mean, the.
Breavement.
Same, but now specifying that you're allowed forty hours.
More time if you need it.
Yeah.
Probably because people, some people have to travel, too, to go to funeral or something. Yeah, I read that in there, yeah.
Yeah, there was not, that's, yeah, the, the changes are pretty minor.
Three days paid, that was the same as one on a contract, so.
Yeah.
Motion. Twenty-two dash two adopting.
Motion for me, thank you.
We'll start at the second. And seconded, would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Uh, Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb? Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Jim Holbar?
Aye.
Is there any correspondence? None, okay. That being said, we'll move right in, we'll recess into executive session.
Okay, let me stop this for a quick.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we will now return to open session at eight twenty-six PM. And we will take, not take any action.
Okay.
On the executive session. So, okay, where are we? City administrator report.
Okay, there's a lot going on. Um, acoustic paneling has been installed in both the food pantry side and the senior center side. Um, we're working on a water pressure issue with the dishwasher on, in the senior kitchen. Um, they had the dishwasher was not functioning properly, so they called the manufacturer who had a tech come out, and it seems like there must be a pressure reducer in the line, because they're not getting enough pressure um, to the dishwasher. They need more pressure the thorough washing of the dishwasher. So we're working to get a plumber in to fix that for them, so that they can get the twenty-five that they need on the little readout in the dishwasher, which I'm not sure what it equates to, because it's not twenty-five like P S I or something, so doesn't really make sense, but plumber I'm sure is gonna help us. So I'm contacted Five Star because they're who installed it, so that we aren't having one plumber come in after another. I'm waiting to see when they can come out. The dishwasher works, it's just not working as thoroughly, and the manufacturer said it needs to get that twenty-five number on the readout in order for all of their warranties. Can't just let it stay how it is, so. That's why we're moving forward on that. Um, the generator, so the supply chain issue strikes again. The H VAC contractor is having a heck of a time finding the right regulator to go from the gas line on the building wall to, um, there's a specific one that's required for the Kohler generator for how it's feeding it. He's searching that out. I put him in contact with Power Systems Plus, which is the generator selling company, and Brendan thought maybe one of the two regulators he had would work, so they're working together. Um, once the regulator gets received, they will put it in line, and then we'll do the startup. That generator's taking forever. Uh, reader board, the base has been poured. The base is gonna cure for fourteen more days, um, to reach about ninety percent of the strength. Typically, twenty-eight days is what you wait, but come for both ninety and serve the engineers. Um, and then they'll install the poles and cabinet. They're looking at, like, that'll put us at the week of February twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. Um, the Klatzup Sewer Project, so the work's moving quickly in Klatzup. The contractor anticipates being complete with the project this Friday. Um, we're gonna be doing some final dressing of the right-of-ways up there, where we've kind of been in the neighborhood um, with some rock, where we can put that down, and then um, we're, we're waiting for the equipment to move out. The log issue with Mr. Eberts, um, we had a self loader log truck driver come and walk the site with me, and it's gonna be very difficult to get those logs to Mr. Ebert's property because of his driveway is kind of an S. And so when we get enough space to bank and turn with the forty-foot logs we have, we'll be end up damaging his cherry tree that's on his driveway, like, there's just a whole bunch of hiccups. So we contacted Mr. Eberts and his attorney and the, at the advice of the log truck driver to see if Mr. Eberts would like to sell the load, because logs are at a high price right now. And he said, just sell them. So we're going to pay the loading cost, he's gonna pay the hauling cost, and then we're gonna cut him a check for what his logs are worth. Mr. Seaplane, on the other hand, his are smaller, kind of scrubbier, and uh, peel excavating is just gonna place his on his property, um, and he's gonna use it for firework. So hopefully by Friday, we will be complete with Klatzup. Um, Weed Avenue stormwater upgrade, so the contractor's gonna be mobilizing Monday, the fourteenth. Um, the right-of-way from weed, of Weed Avenue from Cougar to the linear trail um, is gonna be closed to vehicles. So the notices to the affected citizens and businesses, that'd be the health center and Rose Avenue building, and then the four neighbors, three neighbors there, um, we're gonna do the notices tomorrow, so they'll get a door hanger with a letter attached saying what the project's um, timing is and all of that. Um, and then we're working with, uh, Oregon Parks and Recreation Department on the temporary closure of the linear trail. Um, and the timing for that, because they're gonna have the trail closed for one week um, at that spot, so we'll probably have some detour like at Lone Pine. Get on the highway and come around the because there's not gonna be a way for us to keep the trail open and have the contractors have kind of a safe construction site, so. Um, they think it'll take them about a week to cut through it, trim the trees on the other side, prepare the kind of, uh, rock apron so that the stormwater isn't eroding the bank, and do all that work, and then open the trail back up. Um, the con, uh, so yeah, that's where we're at with that. Sorry, I jumped down in my brain. Uh, Vernonia Skate Park, so the skate park project is underway. I don't know if you've driven by. Um, over the weekend, some citizen volunteers and a counselor uh, removed the concrete slab and asphalt in the project area. Um, the, we were very surprised to see that the entire base is full of three-quarter inch compacted minus or three, compacted three-quarter inch minus. Um, which we don't want to go to waste. Uh, the contractor will not need it all, so we are, a piece of equipment's coming in tomorrow um, to pull the, basically the footing walls are way too thick for the equipment that Skate Park had volunteered. Um, that excavation is too small. And they're all tied in together with rebar, so um, the equipment we're bringing in, we'll be able to pop all the walls that out of there, and then stockpile all the gravel off of the project site. Kind of down by the log is where we started putting it until the backhoe got stuck, and we didn't wanna risk it. Um, so we'll be stockpiling all that gravel there. The contractor will take what they need as a benefit to the project. We told, uh, Lisa, the finance person for the boosters. He's making sure that it benefits them, and it isn't just he's still charging them an amount and getting something as a kind of in-kind donation. Um, and then whatever's left, we'll put wherever we need it. We may put it down at the shop. We may go across the street and fix the parking lot that Zipley and Gorgnet have you know, done a number on. Um, so there's a lot of places we could use good gravel. Um, ever, they're on site tonight. They have one person camping there in a, in a camper over a truck, because just for security. Um, they're, they had a longer fifth wheel there. It moved to Anderson. They just pulled it in there and were, were using it as their office, but that's the owner of the company, and he's camping at Anderson. Um, so yeah, they're excited and they're anticipating that it should take about two months. So end of April is when they're hoping to be done with it. Um, so then we have the West Oregon Electric Underground Project, so um, I know Counselor Webb noticed. I don't know if any of the other council noticed, but there were a handful of larger trees on the backside of the lake right near Webway and the, um, pump for the lake pump, um, that were taken out by West Oregon Electric. Um, they're working on a project to take the feeder line that comes, right now the feed line is on the other side of the bank and comes like seven hundred feet diagonally before it crosses the Nahalem. And so they're coming at a ninety degrees straight across the Nahalem. Um, and then they're going underground along the linear trail, and then they're gonna daylight um, just before the last pull by the sewer lagoons. Um, and that's all within the WOIC easement that we have together for, and that should help the community, because it should stop um, the long-term outages from that feeder line. Basically, what would happen is the trees would fall in the line, it'd be under the water, and they would have to cut the trees off of it and try and shimmy that line back out from under things that were holding it down in the water, so. Um, Dawn was excited to get going on this, and hopefully won't take too long. There's a couple of things we're gonna, uh, make sure that we're on the same page about. We have a a culvert that kind of drains the borrow site, that they need to be cautious of and not hang up with a line or a conduit with a line in the middle of the culvert or whatever. Um, but other than that, they shouldn't have really any impact other than those trees, and then making sure they um, don't affect the culvert. The glass company is scheduled to fix the windows in March, sooner if possible. I told them, this is ridiculous, but gotta do what you gotta do. Um, we will be closing in and removing one window. That's the one um, towards the man door on the police department side, which is currently a patrol room. Um, and has been sheet rocked in for forever. So it's a window on the outside, sheet rock on the inside. Hmm, I don't, so, we're just gonna, um, when they come to do the windows, I've already talked to John's and he's gonna pop the window out, put all the right layers in, and then tweak the hunkie plank. Doesn't look like a big patch job. So that it'll just be a wall instead of a window. And that's what I got.
Did the leak get fixed in the roof?
Yes, so roof doctor came and fixed the, um, where the connection was. They found four other spots where the roof had that same connection and was starting to fail, so they just went to all those eve overhang kind of connection points and fixed all of them.
And if it wasn't for J R getting a easel. Yeah, it, we would, it still would have been soaking wet, I bet.
We wouldn't have noticed it for a while after that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't get into that thing except for easels. So
We might have saw the mold coming.
Maybe.
So now on the Weed Avenue project, so those people gonna have to park their cars. Do we feel comfortable there's plenty of room on the rest of the street, or are we gonna tell them, you know, this is available somewhere to park, or?
Yeah, so we're probably gonna have them park on Cougar.
Yeah.
So Cougar either
That's Oregon.
Or either the health center side or just the the one, one house, I mean, they'd just be parked on the other side of their house. It's really the two other houses that will be kind of moved for
Yeah.
A little bit further from their home than they'd probably like. But one of the kind of benefits is, once this is done, prior to the paving, we're, we're gonna put some, where they kind of have dirt now, when they're parking outside of the little paved strip, we're gonna kind of clean that up and in the prep for the paving, do a whole bunch of rock work so that they have a nice buffer of, um, rock to park on off the asphalt, and then hopefully um, it's in the right-of-way, but I wanna get the buyout from the homeowner to take out that last tree that's really causing an issue to the food banks. Um,
Yeah.
Doc deliveries. I mean, it's in the right-of-way. I just don't wanna go in there and take it without discussing it with them, or even offering to buy them a small one to plant in their backyard, right, or something like that.
A little crab apple tree or something down there?
No, I think it's, it's, I don't think it's crab apple. I think it's something that produces.
Yeah.
Yeah. So wanna, yeah, not just
Speaking of the food bank. Okay, have you made arrangements with the food bank delivery?
No, the notices are getting hand-delivered tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm telling you guys tonight, but
Okay.
I did talk with Toby and Sandy.
Okay.
And so if there is a delivery, we're gonna be putting out a notice and I'll go
Using Mondays.
We'll help some volunteer, if their truck delivery is in that window when they've got it fully blocked back there. So.
Go ahead. And then on the West Oregon project, um, just make sure staff kind of keeps an eye. I think we have some buried lines down to the temperature wells along the trail there that
Yeah, so, um, Dawn did request that I send him that kind of map line, yeah, because then he can see the well and, you know, make sure they're not gonna mess up the temperature monitoring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And don't look like I did, digging out my telephone line and ding it, and then telephone goes out.
Yeah. Doesn't trouble all over your household, huh?
Yes. Mike asked, what's that going on right there with all the barricades? It's a reader board. She was all excited. She thought that was a great idea.
It'll be cool.
Messages and stuff, right?
Yeah. Can't wait for it to be up.
Yeah.
Those dishwasher issue, a lot of times, uh, the lines will flush stuff out.
That's the other
A little fine filter, maybe
Yeah.
Between that and the dishwasher, it could be partially plugged.
That's what we thought, potentially.
Issue on that one?
Yeah.
I've had it happen to me. Um, one thing I just thought of when we talked about City Hall. Two or three years ago, we'd mentioned that the generator here at City Hall isn't sufficient for power outages to run everything and computers and everything. So if we do need to look for places to spin ARPA or whatever you call that, maybe we should consider that. Also, I don't know what it would cost, but it's just something I think we kind of forgot about.
We've talked about that often on before. We thought a natural gas generator here would be a better, more efficient than the, the big diesel one that's sitting in there that barely powers anything.
Yeah.
Um, we did have it rewired a few years back, so we do, we do now have phones, so long as the generator is on, the phones will work. And there's limited plugs throughout City Hall that work, and then some limited plugs in my office, and then some like
Yeah.
So if we had a major event like we've had in the past year, it'd be pretty limited down here for a week.
It, it's hard to function. We, we can make it work, but it's difficult.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just, I've, I've been meaning to bring that up, and I keep forgetting it. It might be something that we think about for the next six months or so, and see if it's doable.
Yeah.
Is the health center putting in a generator? I see they got a, from the pad, that outfit that was digging, that's what they were doing.
Oh, yeah.
I think so.
It looks like a pad for a generator, is what it looks like.
I think so.
Speaking of generators, there's a very large one back behind the waterworks. Did that get given to us for running the plant?
That is our, our generator to run the plant if the power goes out.
It doesn't
Had that forever.
Doesn't look like it's had any care.
We use it, we use it every year at Cameron Festival.
Oh.
And we exercise it, and yeah.
Yeah.
So it's probably got a layer of moss or
Yeah.
Something on it. Oh, yeah. Yeah, and then they
Pretty big one.
Yeah, and then they use it at Jamboree with the jump boxes.
Oh.
We, we have a company come out and check ours every year, too.
Yeah.
That's good to run them, that's for sure.
Yeah. So those are exercised at least twice a year, if not three times a year.
Oh.
Yeah.
Charlie wanted to go to the river the other day, so I took him down there on the gravel bar.
Did he?
He went wild running in the city field there, about four laps, you know? Any word on our backup, uh, water plant? The, I know we, somebody donated a trailer.
Yeah, so I, it's I don't have an update, but I can, uh, push Sean and them to give us one. Yeah, he's like, don't buy the trailer. Someone donated the trailer for the Conex water plant. Um, but then that's kind of where it left. So I can get an update.
We're gonna need to get a contractor to put the box on the trailer.
No, they said they're doing it for Klatzkenai and us, because I don't know who donated it, but Dawn said, but I'll get an update from them, from emergency management.
I like the new sign in front of City Hall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks nice.
Saw the new sign at the lake, looks nice.
It's all the same. We're kind of going with that kind of replicatable imagery.
So your light was off the fish. Did you take it down?
I took it down.
Well, that would have destroyed it anyway, huh?
Well, somebody, I don't know what happened. They rolled it up in a ball and put it back on the stump, so I just took it off. It still works, but what happened, so.
We had some people complaining about running into it.
Yeah.
Maybe someone did and said, nope, no more.
So then we hung the tape on it to like, be like, hey, there's some air, but still.
I was gonna put a bu, big barber on it, but
Yeah. They don't run into the cables that are in the dark, but they run into something that's lit up, huh?
It's a walkway, and during the daylight, it's not
Yeah.
Oh.
How's that, concrete walkway?
Right here, depending on how tall you are.
Be removed.
I'm gonna get your your
Not paying attention.
Demo crew, the demo, the, for the skate park to take that sidewalk out. I'm just kidding. Demo crew, demo the, for the skate park to take that sidewalk out. I'm just kidding.
People using it all the time to look at the beautiful fish.
I think we need like a, something, I was thinking, how could you do it and maybe put it in something clear that's rigid?
Cut it off and.
You could just mount, just mount it to the other stump. Yeah.
Just add it to the list.
That would work, J R, and I never thought of it.
Cut it off and move the other side of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Put it away, steal it then probably.
Right. Any other questions for me?
Pardon me?
Any other questions for me?
Okay. Well, thank you, Josette. Items from the mayor and council.
Looking at the latest member of the C D Trail Committee and all the many dang meetings he ended up getting nominated.
Good.
Kind of working on the trail out of Holtz. Actually, let's close because of logging up there. But last year, you know, there were full out of concern because we're not gonna put a lot of new gravel on up there and it was way too loose for the bikes and people were crashing. Well, they've been in there working. I went hiked up in there and it was actually now all the truck traffic they packed into really nice hard pan panels, you know, where the duals go down the road. So but that hill on Holtz Hill is pretty, they needed to run about twenty, thirty trucks down the hills, what they needed to do.
They rolled it.
I told the county they need to probably load up a dump truck and just run up and down the hill a number of times to try to get it packed in.
It's washing out up there toward the top, isn't it?
Yeah, there's some erosion. Gonna have to do a little handwork to keep the water out of the road. But anyhow, so yeah, another iron in a fire. And then if you've seen some guy wandering around the streets with a tape measure in his hand, Ben and I have been working on sidewalk inventory for the town. In fact, I think I pretty well got it wrapped up today. Ben, I mean, it was, I mean, even an idiot like me could do it. I mean, measurements and get on the computer and, and, you know, he pretty much drawn straight lines, so I could do that. A few corners I had to throw around. So anyhow, we're gonna have width and condition. We'll have an overlay of now we can see it. It's really interesting up here first and second, the little splotchy sidewalks. See there, there's more in there than you envision, you know, so you can drive down the street and not see them. And then like three said, some people know their sidewalks, so some of them are a little hidden. Overall, not bad, I would say through town. There's only, there's probably only two or three spots that I think are maybe hazardous that some of the city should be looking at. And it's usually trees. It's really. Yeah, and kudos to the landowner, the ones on B Street. They've been trying, you know, putting concrete for the differentials, trying to make a slope, but you know, I mean, it's, you know, some of it, you're talking a foot, wow, comes into there down the path. And you know, they've got it all sloped. They've been trying. I can't fault them for that, but it's probably some of them need to be addressed. But overall, not bad. I mean, the majority of the sidewalks. And I've got to write down what I judged as a criteria, but I mean, just the walkability of them that, you know, they were fair condition, you know, so. Yeah, it's just another asset, another tool for us to use for decision making and I think for planning purposes in the future. You know, if we get more into the vision process of trying to connect the town and a committee looking at it and going, well, here, we need something here and here. And then it was interesting because I went out on Saturday and was doing it. And, or no, was, was it Saturday? Which day did we jackhammer?
You didn't?
Went out yesterday then.
Sunday.
Day and I kept running into people, talking to them. I kind of picked their brains a little bit. So, you know, some people wouldn't have been, aren't too hesitant of potentially paying a monthly fee. But I mean, would we pay a monthly fee and city accepts their sidewalk? I mean, I, that would be something for the committee to mull over. I mean, once we get the sidewalk and get the statistics on it and what it would cost to replace on, say, a fifty year plan, what kind of dollar that is, then what would the cost be to make a yearly, you know, improvement?
Yeah.
Just an idea, not gonna propose that until facts and figures. I don't know if a million dollars would cover doing all the sidewalks in town or not. I don't know. But that only worked out to, if we were to collect thirty grand a year, that would only work out to about thirty-three years or something like that. Well, I mean, I watched it last.
Right.
I mean, I've seen one figure they say they'll last a hundred, but I don't believe that here. I think fifty years you'd be pushing it.
Well, I think it depends on thickness and topography and what's around it. Yeah.
Which is awesome, twenty.
You think so?
Oh, yeah. You'll be down to aggregate in twenty years if the rain's hitting it hard, then.
Well, on first has been there for at least thirty. On first.
Yeah.
And it's in great condition, but they probably don't put the wrong kind of salt on it and stuff.
Right.
Salt will just.
And I noticed that down here between the learning center and the blue house. And that's a new section in there and the surface, there's, it's like crumbles.
Yeah.
All over right in there.
Well, depends on.
Must be salt.
You, you can use a cheap concrete too. You use four thousand or five thousand pound, you get a lot more cream in it. Depends on how much you work it, who's doing the finishing. There's a lot of different factors, but yes, salin is definitely not gonna help.
Yeah.
On the salt, right. That's what happened there.
Well, yeah, and you know, maybe that's something as a city would put out, you know. I mean, I think we require people to clean their side, clean their sidewalks, but we need to be smart. I, I actually, some of that sidewalks, and it could be that the surface is gone and it's just down to the aggregate, but it's the old really nice smooth river rock aggregate. Or maybe they did an expose. I don't know. But some of that's actually very nice and I think it's just tough as nails.
I've got stuff in my house that I've ruined and now it looks like exposed aggregate.
That could be, but I rated a lot of that as fair because it, I graded basically on walkability.
Yeah.
And you can walk on that just as good as a. It's really the ones that are starting to get the differentials in there or just start to shatter.
Right.
And, and coming apart. And there was some that the tops folded off and it wasn't good enough.
Yeah.
So anyhow, yeah, I think just gonna run around the different neighborhoods and look to see if I missed anything, but there's pies in jams here and there. I was surprised up on, up on. Oh, Julie Craskis.
Yeah.
Section and there, there's a sidewalk to nowhere for you right there. But there used to be two homes there, she said.
Where's that at now?
Julie Craskis.
Right up by them, by the motel.
Yeah, I, I just thought, oh, I'll look around the corner. There's no sidewalk there. And I looked over and yeah, there's a sidewalk through there. It was in good shape. I asked her, she come walking up about then. She was one of the people I picked her brain, but we used the sidewalk. She kind of gave me that funny look, you know, like, no, you think I'd walk on my own sidewalk? I just walked down the street. There's no traffic, so. But kudos to Ben because that was just really a slip. If, you know, just the city map overlay. If you ever go into his work that he does, it's made with, what is it? Love and coffee or something?
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I guess that's it.
Thank you, Dale. Thank you for what? The help you're finding.
I walk around this town all the time. Anyhow, might as well be making some.
Anybody else have any issues?
I got one.
All right.
I drove around Nickerson Loop and I don't know that the new sidewalk's gonna do any help to fix the problem.
Which problem?
The water running into Schrader's property.
Cause it's running over it?
Well, not yet, but it's only from the top of the sidewalk, what's supposed to be a gutter.
Yes.
To half at the most.
Yeah, so it isn't a gutter. It's a match to what Schmack will put in there, which is a mountable curb. Uh, councillor Webb and I discussed this and we were talking about how do we solve the problem? Because the, what you'd want to put in there is a standard curb, right? Would have six inches of relief or a six inch area. So councillor Webb's idea is that you, when you can't solve the problem, you flip it a hundred and eighty degrees. And so one option there is actually just having a channel cut, like a half moon cut out of that to make a gutter in that pinch point because.
I just, another bigger thing would be is future planning not let, that design will work if it's done properly.
Right.
It was not done properly.
Right.
To make sure that somebody pays a little bit more, more attention to detail.
Yes.
So that you get a higher lip. Like Heather Lane, that works no problem because
Right.
I didn't go measure or anything, but I know I've seen it. There's a larger, from the sidewalk to what they call the gutter.
Right.
I'm calling the gutter.
Yeah.
Is quite a bit higher.
Right.
Yeah, it's a low curbing gutter.
So I would assume that maybe with that gutter, they would have, or that walk, they would have raised it and tapered it on the edge to that barrier that's there, that made the sidewalk be more of another barrier to keep it from running over.
Yeah.
Yeah, I forgot about that discussion we had on that.
Yeah.
What were you talking, Donnie? So there's.
The straight stretch. The only section we, we re-poured like it existed was the straight stretch along the side of Tony Schrader's property. That's, that's what the storm, there's two catch basins, so it catches all the stuff and then the storm pipe runs under that sidewalk and then it goes to the corner of Knott Street. So it mimics what's there. It's still not doing the job because there isn't enough of a gutter. So what we had talked about when we knew we were gonna have to put in like for like because we didn't want it to be this kind of weird where some of the people's curbs are this tall and some are nothing, was having someone just grind a channel in that and actually create a gutter in that concrete to force the water a direction.
So down at the old Lindauer place, that problem has been addressed. So there's no more.
Yeah, so the, so the water that used to come around the loop and rush down that gets caught now. Comes down along where Eileen's property was in catch basin system.
Right.
Then it crosses the street, then it goes under the sidewalk along Tony's to Knott.
Okay.
So we're catching the, the Knott Street side of that subdivision is getting to Knott. The only stuff going towards Lindauer's is the, the other half of the subdivision, which it can handle that. It couldn't handle all of it, is what was happening in front of Lindauer's. But yeah, we did talk about that because we were like, yeah, it's still not, it needs to be a six inch curbing gutter, but then how would you do that as the homes that have a good sidewalk would never have to replace it by the, so. Yeah.
I mean, I guess along Tony's stretch there, we could have raised it because there's probably not gonna ever be a house there.
Correct.
We, we could have put it to spec and then when we got, did we replace in front of the houses down there?
You went. We just went through. Two lots past Tony's property that was done.
Yeah, it's the first.
We could have raised that section and somewhere we'd had a slope off.
Yeah.
Hook up to the other. So I guess that might have been a little bit of a miss there. Are we required, where they're gonna build around? I know some of those sidewalks are some, so when they build, we requiring them replace, replace those sidewalks?
Yeah, that was our agreement.
Cause some of those, we viewed that as being substandard sidewalk, right?
Right. So they'll have to repair and replace anything that's trip hazards, anything like that when they, before they get CVA, right?
Yeah, it'll be all part of their permits.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just anything that's not to standard will have to be replaced.
Even the drainage to the sidewalk up there, I was surprised the new house they built isn't a whole bunch higher.
I know.
You know.
John Bax?
Yes.
They have a basement.
They have a basement in there.
I wish him luck with that.
Right. I'm like, get that flex deal. Go to the commercial and get that rubber stuff because I can't imagine that the ground isn't just super wet, but hey, to each his own.
School at that meeting, they said, well, it'll be like a daylight basement. And I said, they don't work well around here. Supposedly, I haven't heard of water leaking into the gym where they dug out, but heard other water damage up there.
Yeah.
Anything else, Tom?
That's it.
Is that, um, the strip by the school where we, we have like the balance beam? Are those picnic tables city or are they school?
They are ours and someone broke them.
Yeah, they're bad.
Yeah. So Tim, I didn't want to add to Tim's turmoil because the bathrooms got hit and they took all the stuff from the women's and put it in the men's or something, but we gotta get new ones and we'll probably just get some metal framed ones because, and then just.
Analyze it, like the.
Like what I say to my kids, you're the reason we can't have anything nice. Cause you're ruining it. Yeah, those need to get fixed or removed out of there, yeah.
More vandalism, huh?
Yeah, that, the new sign at the lake.
When are we gonna move forward with cameras on those bathrooms and stuff?
Yeah, so we're waiting for the, so we're waiting for a proposal from a security company for kind of a pop and play version because Zipley's costs monthly to have internet there when we aren't really interested in broadcasting internet because we didn't think that was a good use of it. It will be more cost effective to do something that's got its own saddle or cellular signal. The reader board has its own cellular signal in there, so we don't need wifi for that. So we're looking at cameras that could go there and at the skate park on the two lights. Cause we're doing lighting there. Um, the city is part of their skin in the game. And so we're looking, I don't know if he has an estimate for his.
He hasn't. He said, he told me last week he was getting ready to send it over and I haven't got it yet. I'll have to.
Cause we asked for kind of the ones you can pop and play. They, they send the data, you know, to the cloud via cellular signal. And then we can not worry about SIM cards or anything like that, that usually the pop and play have is a little bit less.
Have some of those.
Verizon does?
Yeah.
Oh, with the, at their, but what do you mean?
Verizon Cellular.
Yeah.
Has cameras that'll go through their deal, so you don't have to. You can put them anywhere you got Verizon service.
Okay.
Put a camera up.
Be interesting to see.
The ones, the ones that, that PACTAC is proposing is you can use any cellular service that we have here. So we just have to connect it to our, our cellular service.
Plan.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're waiting for that proposal because we were thinking that's gonna be more useful. And then we're not paying a monthly big charge to broadcast internet and paying to get the fiber under the highway or however they would do that or.
And you can move them around.
Yep. If they're not aim or getting what we're looking for, yeah.
I'm starting to think these kids don't fear the court system, but maybe you need to go back to public shaming or something.
They used to have a jail down there.
Yeah. Off down that to the park and set it right next to the restroom and.
Right.
Tell me you got ninety days.
So how vandal proof is our reader board gonna be? I mean, I know we're gonna be a pie out of reach, but.
Yeah.
Is it gonna be sensitive to?
Rocks?
Lobbs. Well, we talked about that with the height that we're putting it. We're not fearful that someone's gonna get their hands on it and that's really what the diodes can be damaged by the most is like someone picking them off there. They have a good, pretty good shatter resistance as a mat. But it's really someone kind of weakening it. I can talk to Shane, who is the, there may be some sort of thin plexiglass you could mount on it. I don't know how that does with resolution or if heating of the diodes is a problem, but. I don't know how that does with resolution or if heating of the diodes is a problem, but I can talk to him about it. Say, hey, we seem to have this problem. So when it's new, can we get this to go over it and then maybe eventually when it gets discolored, you don't need it because no one's doing that anymore or it's not interesting. Yeah. Or you replace it. I can ask. Yeah.
Mount a camera to the top of it.
Yeah. Looking every direction.
Now.
You know, actually, last time I was back at my work, the guys were showing me a little camera and it actually takes a picture 360 degrees. It's craziest thing I ever saw. They were being able, it's real small. You can place it inside a piece of equipment, see what's going on and then slow bullet, see what's going wrong. And yeah, it was crazy. Technology is out there.
Right.
Yeah, I think Pactac is actually one of the cameras that he's gonna propose is a 360 degree camera.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? We're ready for our next, an item summary?
All right.
Okay.
So, um, I have the staff's gonna work up for the next council meeting. More detail on the ARPA criteria and accessibility to 501(c)(3). Um, we're gonna call emergency management for a water trailer Conex update. And look into with Sean, uh, Sean, Shane, if there's a reader board plexiglass kind of much cover of it. Anything else?
And we have a workshop session February 15th, 6:30 PM.
Yep.
So, okay. I'll adjourn this meeting at 9:07 PM. Meeting adjourned.
Steph, are you gonna hang this up? I found it all.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.